Bienvenidos al NAACP y Delta Sigma Theta Alumnado de Jersey. Y la Organización de Servicios de Vallesberg Unidos es orgullosa de patrocinar este Foro de candidatos del Consejo escolar. Este foro es nuestro evento anual. Esto es el 12o año en que llevamos llevando estos foros. Cada año hay una elección escolar. Así que queremos involucrar intencionalmente a los residentes para votar. Ya sea que tenga un hijo en el distrito, en el distrito escolar o no. Es tan imparitivo que votamos. Y no queremos que solo voten en la oscuridad. Queremos que escuchen a los candidatos. Queremos que se involucren con ellos. Si están en Facebook y tienen una pregunta que quieren hacerle a los candidatos, por favor, pónganla en el chat. Lo monitarán y sacarán las preguntas de ahí. Así que lo que me gustaría hacer ahora es presentar a nuestra co-chaira del Comité de participación civil, Deborah J. Chandler.
Buenas noches. Estamos contentas de tener a todos aquí y a los que nos están viendo virtualmente. Me gustaría tomar esta oportunidad para invitar a mi co-chair Monica Hall, quien sirve conmigo en el Comité de Acción Social del Alumnado de Jersey de Delta Sigma Theta Inc.
Gracias, Sora Chandler. Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Monica Hall y tengo el placer de servir como uno de tres co-chairs para el Comité de Acción Social del Alumnado de Jersey de Delta Sigma Theta Inc. Y es mi placer presentar bienvenidos a cargo del alumnado y a mis sororitas. Como muchos de ustedes saben, Delta Sigma Theta Inc. fue fundado en 1913 en el campus de la Universidad de Howard para promover la herencia de hermanas, la beca y el servicio y la acción social. La sororidad se enfrenta fuertemente a temas que enfrentan la comunidad negra a través de nuestro trazo programático de cinco puntos de desarrollo económico, desarrollo educativo, salud física y mental, conciencia política y participación y conciencia internacional y participación. Al principio, Delta ha estado comprometida con el servicio a través de la acción social desde su fundación. Nueve doscientos fundadores participaron en la Marcha de la Obrera de Mujeres de 1913, la mayor protesta masiva por el derecho de las mujeres a votar. Así que homenajamos al público y a los candidatos por tomarse el tiempo para participar en uno de los tenientes más básicos y fundamentales de la democracia y ciudadanía. Como ciudadana, tiene el derecho de votar y tener su voz oída en cada elección. Y es especialmente importante votar en elecciones locales como esta. Así que te pedimos, si estás viendo, que compartas este feed en tus redes sociales y cuéntale a un amigo que cuente para que su voz sea oída el día de la elección de abril 19. Esperamos escuchar los plataformas de los candidatos y agradecemos al NAACP, la Branche de Newark, por tener foros como este cada año. Gracias.
Gracias, Sora Hall. Buenas noches. Mi co-chair, bueno, estoy haciendo doble trabajo esta noche, tanto como miembro de Delta Sigma Theta y también como miembro de la Branche de Newark, New Jersey, NAACP. Y mi co-chair Ali McBride y yo, junto con los miembros del Comité de Comercio y Engaño de la NAACP de New Jersey, estamos contentos de recibirte a lo que se ha convertido en tradición anual, el Foro de Candidatos del Consejo escolar de Newark. Y antes de presentar a los moderadores para el programa de esta noche, quiero tomar un momento para una lección de civic micro. El servicio en el Consejo escolar de Newark es vital para el desarrollo positivo de la juventud de nuestra comunidad y apreciamos la voluntad de los individuos que tenemos aquí esta noche que hicieron el llamado y cumplieron con los siguientes requisitos básicos necesarios para ser elegidos. Además de asegurar las firmaciones de petición, los candidatos prospectivos han cumplido los siguientes requisitos para ser certificados. Número uno, un candidato del Consejo escolar debe ser un votante registrado. Número dos, un candidato del Consejo escolar debe ser residente del distrito en el que están corriendo. Número tres, un candidato del Consejo escolar debe tener un diploma de secundaria mínimo o un certificado de equivalencia de secundaria. Un candidato del Consejo escolar no puede ser convicto de un delito y un candidato del Consejo escolar no puede ser empleado actualmente del distrito y/o relacionado con un empleado actual en ese distrito. Eso concluye mi lección de civic micro sobre candidatos del Consejo escolar. Por supuesto, el documento va a estar lleno, ¿verdad? Así que esta noche tenemos tres moderadores para este foro de este año y es mi placer presentarlos. Vivian Carter es una nata de Newark, cuya pasión y compromiso con la educación y el amor a la comunidad le permitió servir a los estudiantes de la escuela pública de Newark desde el kindergarten hasta los adultos durante 40 años. Durante su 14o mandato en el Consejo escolar de Newark, Vivian ha servido como profesora de clase, desarrolladora de personal matemático, entrenador de matemáticas, tutor de matemáticas, asesor de ajedrez de ajedrez, coordinadora de pruebas, entrenador de robótica y instructora de GED de matemáticas. La dedicación y compromiso de Vivian a la excelencia académica no ha desaparecido. Ella es la recibidora de numerosos premios, incluyendo Who's Who de profesores de secundaria, Maestra de secundaria de Vallesberg, Maestra de la Gobernación del Gobierno de New Jersey del año, Champion de Robótica de la Escuela Pública de Newark, co-chair de la Oficina del Mayor Ra's Baraka del Año de los Héroes y Heróicas y del Sororío Nacional de Phi Delta Kappa Inc. Alumnado de Delta Pi Chapter Distinguida de Maestra. Una miembro activa y duradera de la iglesia Saint James AME, estoy orgullosa de considerar a Vivian como mi hermana y miembro del Alumnado de Jersey de Delta Sigma Theta, donde sirve en el Comité de Premios de Beca, asesor del programa Delta Teen Live, la "Empoderando" de las maestras para crear oportunidades para la independencia, conocida como "N-Body". Y eso es todo. Así que bienvenidos. Ahora, mi co-chair, ¿qué puedo decir de él? Alec McBride es un ex-iniciador investigador recientemente retirado del Departamento de Corregión de la Diputación de Investigaciones Especiales de New Jersey. Con diez de esos años con el Marshall de Estados Unidos Futuro de Tareas. Ali recibió su título de Doctor de Artes en inglés de la Universidad Johnson C. Smith, HBCU en Charlotte, Carolina del Norte, y un máster de Ciencias Administrativas con concentración en Estudios Internacionales y Administración Global de la Universidad Fairleigh Dickinson. Mientras estudiaba en la Universidad Fairleigh Dickinson, se le otorgó la oportunidad de estudiar en la Colección de Rockston en Londres, Inglaterra, y la Universidad de Mendoza en Argentina. Aquí en casa, Ali está comprometido con la justicia social como activista de la comunidad y la importancia de abrazar todos los aspectos de la diaspira africana. Como viajante mundial, Ali encuentra el tiempo para continuar su pasión por el servicio a otros como voluntario con el Proyecto de Apoyo de Haití en Malo, Haití. Ahora, estoy especialmente contenta esta noche de recibir a Haleah Robinson. Ella es un stakeholder vital en este proceso entero. Haleah actualmente es un senior de la escuela secundaria de la universidad. Está activa en su comunidad. Y sirve como defensora de la juventud con el programa YMS en la Universidad Rutgers. Estos son nuestros moderadores para esta noche. Gracias.
Candidatos, estos son los reglamentos de base del foro. Todos los candidatos tendrán la oportunidad de hacer comentarios de abertura. Limitación de tiempo: dos minutos. Comentarios cerrados: uno minuto. Para las preguntas específicas sobre gobierno, enseñanza y aprendizaje, financiación y personal, los candidatos tendrán 90 segundos para responder.
Para la pregunta general, los candidatos tendrán 60 segundos para responder. Y para las preguntas de los estudiantes, cada candidato tendrá 90 segundos para responder.
Los candidatos tendrán tiempo y nuestra respuesta a las preguntas tendrá tiempo. El reloj de tiempo estará en una señal de doble signo durante 30 segundos. Remanecerá un signo rojo para parar. Los candidatos también pueden darle un pulgar cuando el tiempo se acabe. Los candidatos podrán hacer sus preguntas. Atacos personales contra otros candidatos no se permitirán. El público está incitado a poner preguntas en el chat. Si el tiempo permite, la pregunta será dada a los candidatos con uno minuto para responder. Para los que no respondan, se dirán a la Universidad de New York de Educación para el usedat de 2022, el Foro de Candidatos del Consejo escolar.
Sí, 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 sí.
Abertura como declaración de abertura. Buenas noches, Newarkers. Mi nombre es Philip Wilson. Soy el candidato masculino de padre que está corriendo para el Consejo escolar. Tengo tres hijos que asisten a la escuela aquí en South Ward, la ciudad de Newark donde vivo. Estoy extremadamente involucrado en su educación, así como en la educación de todos los niños y niñas en las escuelas públicas de Newark. Soy representante de la OCCE Sur. Soy el presidente de la Comisión de Políticas de la Oficina de la Juventud temprana. Estoy corriendo para el Consejo escolar para devolver el ahorro que nuestros estudiantes merecen. Mientras asistí a las escuelas públicas de Newark en mi época, me otorgaron las variedades de experiencias y experiencias de estimación emocionantes que apoyaron mi crecimiento educativo. Quiero devolver el mindset al distrito. Quiero centrarme en las oportunidades de educación técnica de carrera para nuestra juventud mayor, promover la participación de los padres y la familia, especialmente la participación de los padres, y asegurarnos de que los estudiantes pre-aid están en la rama y en la tienda. Espero que estén proporcionando a todos nosotros. Como miembro del Consejo escolar, trabajaré en los comités de todos tres. Votadme, Philip Wilson, A3, abril 19, 2022.
Siguiente candidato.
¿Es solo yo? Buenas noches a todos y gracias al NAACP y al Sororío Delta Sigma Theta por poner este evento importante y anual juntos. Mi nombre es Dorian Murray Thomas. Soy educadora, defensora y orgullosa de un candidato para el Consejo escolar de Newark. Buenas noches a todos y gracias por todos venir aquí esta noche. No me queda nada esta noche de estar aquí sobre las rodillas de los gigantes. Gigantes como mi abuela, que probablemente está mirando o orando por mí ahora mismo. Una mujer que ha sobrevivido al cáncer, Jim Crow en escuelas segregadas y todavía la encontró en la robbery para orar por mí y a todos los demás. Gigantes como mi padre, que emigró aquí de Sudamérica, Guyana, creó una mejor vida para mí y sus hermanos y su madre. Y estoy aquí hoy porque luchar por mí misma y los demás y por un legado está en mi sangre. Y estoy corriendo para esta reelección para el Consejo escolar porque necesitamos personas en este Consejo que lucharan por nuestros hijos. Eso es lo que he hecho mientras estuve en el Consejo. Eso es lo que he hecho antes de entrar en el Consejo. Y si me electan, eso es lo que continuaré haciendo. En mi primer mandato en el Consejo, he sido capaz de defender el homicidio y asegurarme de que una legislación que es casi tan antigua como algunas de las niñas aquí hoy está en realidad implementada en nuestras escuelas. Asegurándonos de que tengamos una mesa de la comunidad como presidenta de programa y instrucción que realmente esté permitiendo a la gente saber qué está pasando en nuestro distrito, qué están aprendiendo nuestros estudiantes, cuáles son las recursos y luego cuáles son los desafíos para que podamos mejorar. Defender para asegurarnos de que tengamos transparencia como distrito para cómo reportamos y lidiamos con COVID-19, una epidemia que arruinó nuestra ciudad, arruinó nuestro distrito, pero tenemos que ser responsables sin importar qué. Y luego asegurarnos de que en el Consejo tengamos formas de defender a las jóvenes y de trazar equidad. Sabemos que tenemos un distrito, pero podría ser una historia de dos ciudades dependiendo de qué escuela vas a ir y quién está enseñando y cuáles son los recursos. Y así crear un comité de equidad para que podamos ser realmente sobre los problemas de desigualdad afectando nuestras escuelas. Y siempre he luchado fuertemente y sin apolojía por los niños de Newark, por solo una pequeña niña de Newark como yo. Y si me electan y mi equipo, continuarei luchando por nosotros. Y así estoy corriendo con propósito, con coraje, con oración, pero sin apolojía detrás de nuestros hijos. Mi nombre es Dorian Murray Thomas. Soy miembro de la Movimiento de la escuela de Newark Forward Team. Le pido que voten por mí, Dorian Murray Thomas, A4. Chris, A6. Y Danny Gonzalez, A5. Para que podamos continuar creando un distrito que sea resultado impulsado, enfocado en los estudiantes y en la equidad. Si votan por mí y votan por mi equipo, tendremos gente que es sin apolojía sobre nuestros hijos. Y en este momento, eso es exactamente lo que necesitamos y más. Gracias.
Estoy tan feliz de que esté en mi equipo. Buenas noches. Gracias por invitarme. Mi nombre es Crystal Williams. Soy una orgullosa residente de Newark. Soy una orgullosa residente y madre de siete hijos. Digo eso para decir que mis hijos son todos diferentes, pero el objetivo es que todos sean exitosos. Siento que es hora de que cada uno de los niños en la ciudad de Newark, no importa cuáles sean sus necesidades, se les cumplan. Esa es la expectativa de cada padre que lleva a su hijo a la escuela todos los días. Estoy tan grata. Agradezco a ustedes, quiero ayudar. He sido una defensora larga de los niños y de su bienestar. Así que mientras la excelencia académica siempre es el objetivo, tenemos que asegurarnos de que estén socialmente y emocionalmente desarrollados. La pandemia nos ha golpeado duro, los ha golpeado duro. Tenemos que asegurarnos de que estén cuidados por sus núcleos. Hay cosas buenas pasando en la ciudad de Newark en educación y lo que se está haciendo ahora. Siento que ayudaría a asegurarme de que los recursos que están en... que están llegando a nosotros sean disponibles para los administradores para que puedan llegar a cada hijo y sus necesidades individuales. Estoy corriendo con suerte. Dorian es A4. Danny es A5. Y yo, Crystal Williams, A6. Muchas gracias por tu tiempo.
Buenas noches. Gracias. Mi nombre es Thomas Luna. Y antes de empezar, también quiero agradecer al NAACP, Delta Sigma Theta, por tener esto. Al USVO por incluirnos y recibirnos en su espacio. Y nuestros moderadores, especialmente nuestro moderador de los estudiantes, por todo el trabajo que van a hacer hoy. Mi nombre es Thomas Luna. Y el 19 de abril estoy buscando ganar uno de tus tres votos para A1, Thomas Luna, para el Consejo escolar de Newark. Mi historia empieza hace muchos meses, creciendo con dos padres trabajadores que trabajaron varios trabajos simultáneamente para mantener las luces encendidas. Su trabajo duro fue mi inspiración. Y lo único que podía alimentarlo fue la escuela. Y así empecé a ser buena en la escuela y eventualmente fui la primera persona en la historia de mi familia a graduarse de la universidad. Después de eso, empecé a enseñar en escuelas públicas de Elizabeth y luego enseño en el West Ward de Rise Academy y he estado viviendo y enseñando en Newark durante más de una década. En esa década, me he enamorado de esta ciudad. Y si hay algo seguro, es que proteges lo que amas. Y para proteger una ciudad, tienes que involucrarte. Y eso es exactamente lo que hice. Fui a reuniones de consejo y de Consejo escolar, reuniones de alquiler y reuniones de bloque para que pudiera aprender sobre el pasado y el presente de nuestra ciudad y ser un contribuyente proactivo para el futuro de nuestra ciudad también. Y en ese momento, me convirtí en co-chair de Newark para la Equidad y Diversidad Educativas, también conocido como "NEED". Y en ese momento y en ese papel, fui capaz de organizar con los estudiantes, las familias y los maestros para pasar políticas a nivel local, como 9120, alrededor de vacaciones, así como a nivel estatal, como el Senado, 2826, alrededor de la escasez de maestros. Estoy corriendo para que pueda traer mi experiencia como educadora y organizador de políticas para que podamos colectivamente buscar los problemas de equidad y comunidad, lo cual es vital para establecer la base para nuestras escuelas. Esa es la experiencia que traigo, esa es la experiencia que estoy buscando mantener en esta posición y esa es la cosa que nos llevará hacia adelante. El 19 de abril, voten A1, Thomas Luna, por esa experiencia. Y espero ganar voto esta noche. Gracias.
Siguiente candidato.
Buenas noches. ¿Es mi micrófono? Buenas noches. Primero, darle honor a Dios, quien es el jefe de mi vida. Mi nombre es Allison James Bryson. Soy A7 en el voto. Soy un... Lo siento. Soy la fundadora de una organización no propia aquí en la ciudad de Newark. Soy certificada en la obra social con la División de Protección de los Niños y Permanencia. Le di un ódio para proteger e ayudar a los niños y fortalecer a las familias y a nuestra comunidad. También soy supervisora de padres. Supervisto por orden de visitas de padres y sus hijos para determinar si la reunificación es posible en el futuro. Soy la presidenta de la Universidad Secundaria de la Universidad de New York, una escuela que asiste mi hija. Fue la victoria de 2021 de su clase mientras debía con su propia trama durante la pandemia de COVID-19. Soy certificada y calificada para sentarse en el Consejo escolar de Newark. Tengo años de experiencia trabajando con los niños, la comunidad y las familias. Tengo mis propias tragedias mientras estaba en la escuela secundaria y en la escuela. Estuve en una escuela pública de secundaria cansada, no sabiendo que tenía una impedición de aprendizaje y estaba sufriendo con problemas de salud mental. No fue hasta que fui a la Universidad Rutgers cuando recomendaron que yo mismo fuera y me evaluara. Y fue en ese momento que aprendí que tenía una impedición de aprendizaje. Y esta no debería ser la historia de ninguno de nuestros hijos que están detrás de nosotros. Deberíamos poner evaluaciones en la escuela, evaluaciones robustas. Las compañías de estudio de niños están ahí ahora, pero tardará seis a nueve meses en completar una compañía de estudio de niños. Alrededor de ese momento, la escuela habría terminado y los niños volverían el siguiente año con la misma pérdida de aprendizaje que tenían el año anterior. Es hora de un cambio. Y ese cambio es Allison K. James Bryson. Voten A7 el 19 de noviembre y espero tu apoyo. Gracias.
Siguiente candidato, por favor.
Buenas noches, a todos. Mi nombre es Maggie Freeman. Ven aquí hoy como la verdadera elección de la comunidad de las escuelas públicas de Newark y el desastre de esta ciudad. Soy la epítome de este ciclo de vida que se ha explicado por los otros candidatos. Asistí a las escuelas públicas de Newark, la escuela Maple Avenue, que ya no existe, amplié mi educación en las escuelas de la ciudad de Essex. Asistí a la Universidad de Essex, también a la Universidad de Rutgers. Y también he estado dentro de la comunidad a nivel de las raíces, como los esfuerzos del NAACP hace años y años, solo poniendo un camino para la gente de esta comunidad, los seniores, adultos y niños. Ven aquí hoy para realmente decirles que estamos en crisis. Ya no hay más tiempo para los adolescentes, las antiques, la política o ninguna otra cosa que nos distraiga de la verdadera cuestión, que es que nada existe que avance a nuestros hijos en la actual excita. Represento a ustedes, a todos ustedes, en Zoom, Facebook, Instagram, Snap. Si están viendo en su YouTube TV, yo represento a ustedes. Primero, antes de cualquier otra llamada que haya. No una empresa, no tus agencias gubernamentales. Ustedes en casa, estoy mirando a ustedes por su voto. El 19 de abril, A2 es mi posición. Por favor, voten para alguien que es auténtico, que es real, que es honesto y que está dispuesto a volver a las bases, que es la educación que lleva a un futuro, no uno que esté bajo seis pies, bajo la tierra. Muchas gracias.
Ok, vamos a dar un voto. Con estas preguntas, cada uno de ustedes tendrá uno minuto y veinte segundos. Es como dos personas con 90 segundos. Así que quiero que todos den algunos de estos. Así que la pregunta que quiero hacer antes de tomar las decisiones es para todos los candidatos, solo dos segundos. Empecemos esta hora con Dorian Murray Thomas. La pregunta es, ¿cuál es tu comprensión del trabajo de un miembro del Consejo escolar? ¿Cuál es tu comprensión del trabajo de un miembro del Consejo escolar?
Es una pregunta complicada porque a la superficie el trabajo es gobernar el distrito, aprobar presupuestos, gestionar al superintendente. Pero también se trata de escuchar a la comunidad para que puedas hacer todas esas cosas que acabo de decir con fidelidad y desde un punto de vista de la juventud y la comunidad enfocada. Y mi propia experiencia, siendo completamente honesta, la gobernanía requiere mucho trabajo y requiere fuerza. Y como la mujer más joven que jamás fue elegida al Consejo escolar, entiendo que la gente me mira y no siempre sabe que cuando vengo, no vengo a jugar. Y así cuando se trata de nuestros hijos, realmente no vengo a jugar. Y así en cuanto se trata de gobernanía en esta ciudad, he sido sin apolojía en mi defensa de las jóvenes. Cuando había un requisito de graduación que estaba cambiando, como el requisito de la FAFSA, el distrito quería asegurarse de promover la adquisición de los estudiantes a la universidad que realmente tenían FAFSA. Aseguré de que no cambiamos la política sin consultar la comunidad, sin asegurarnos de que no hubieran talleres para que la gente pudiera aprender cómo realmente llenar la FAFSA. Y así asegurarnos de que hubiera transparencia y asociación con nuestras jóvenes, sus padres, que pudieran hacer lo que querían hacer para nuestras jóvenes, pero hacerlo de una manera que tenía sentido. Cuando se trataba de COVID, en un momento en el que la ciudad y el distrito tenían una de las mayores tasas de infección de COVID, pero no podías ir a nuestro sitio web y ver cuáles eran los números de COVID. No fue hasta que escribí la política de datos de COVID y la implementé que el distrito se convirtió en responsable y aseguró de que realmente publicábamos ese dato. Y así la gobernanía parece escuchar, parece mantener a la gente accountable y parece ser sin apolojía. Y eso es lo que siempre he sido y lo que continuaré siendo en este país.
No tengo experiencia en el Consejo, sin embargo. Lo que diría es que el trabajo de un miembro del Consejo es seleccionar y evaluar un superintendente que va a poner en place estas políticas que aseguran que nuestros hijos entran en un entorno donde están amado y aprendiendo y están emocionados y prosperando. Así que eso sería lo que percibo como el rol más importante de un miembro del Consejo. En mi trabajo actual, tengo cuatro horas cuando el circuito se apaga para volver a la pista. Así que diría que necesita velocidad y agilidad. Cuando se trata de nuestros hijos, no pueden esperar dos, tres, cuatro años escolares antes de que descubram que algo no está funcionando y luego lo cambien. Tiene que ser hecho tan pronto como sea posible. Gracias.
Sí. Igual que lo que se compartió, ¿verdad? El papel de un miembro del Consejo es contratar, deshacer, evaluar al superintendente, asegurarse de que el presupuesto es soundo y luego introducir una política que va a cambiar el paisaje para el bien. Como miembro del Consejo, ¿verdad? Donde me centraría son dos fortalezas que tengo, que es una alrededor del presupuesto y que es alrededor de la política, ¿verdad? Porque si no está en la política, no estamos hablando de nada real. Y así si miras mi plataforma, ¿verdad? Hay un número de elementos allí que en realidad requieren cambios sustanciales de políticas, ¿verdad? Y tengo experiencia como organizador de getting policy passed a nivel MPS así como a nivel estatal, lo que te permite saber dos cosas. Uno, la experiencia cuenta porque hemos cambiado la estadística. Y dos, esa es la mentalidad que estoy trayendo a esta posición. Una mentalidad que creo que va a agregar valor para cada alumno, cada maestro, cada familia. Y en el lado del presupuesto, no podemos implementar nada a menos que pongamos nuestro dinero donde nuestra boca está. Y cuando se trata del presupuesto, tenemos que estar seguros de que las cosas que estamos pidiendo están realmente financiadas, están realmente respaldadas por los recursos que tenemos para los niños porque si no estamos dando lo máximo posible a los niños, no estamos cambiando nada. Esas dos mentalidades son las experiencias y las fortalezas que traigo a esta mesa. Es la que continuaré trayendo como miembro del Consejo y es exactamente por eso que A1 debe ser uno de tus votos para el Consejo escolar.
La gobernanía para mí, número uno, es mantener al superintendente responsable por implementar las políticas y lograr los objetivos. Si mantenemos al superintendente responsable por sus acciones y por implementar las políticas, la escuela no puede avanzar en las direcciones correctas. No podemos tener miedo de tener conversaciones difíciles con aquellos que están en cargo de liderar nuestras escuelas en las direcciones correctas. El papel de la gobernanía para mí parece como muchos comités en cada escuela.
The site may governance to me looks like many community, many committees in every school, like the PTSO, strengthening the PTSO, where parents, teachers, and students can come together and advocate for what's going wrong in the school and bring it back to the board to let them know what their responsibilities are, what their needs are, and how can they help address the needs inside of the school.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you so much. So governance to me definitely echoes the panel with overseeing the superintendent as well as overseeing budgets and policy. Uh, thank you so much. Oh, can you hear me better? But overall, you have to know what you're governing. Um, and right now, as I mentioned before, our community is in crisis. We are, you don't even have a lot of attendance in schools, so we have to first learn to listen, understand the challenges, understand what it means to go to school, receive a quality education under the rest of COVID, a pandemic, now a war that is overseas internationally, and so many things that will negatively impact us from here on out. Our children are going through so many crises simultaneously that not even the adults right now in this room understand the impact that is headed our way and the challenges that we have to face. So we have to get back to the basics, as I mentioned before, understanding what foundation needs to be laid so that the next generations from here on out don't have to suffer immensely at the cost of not doing anything, staying with the same old policies that did not work before and that should not be implemented now. So we have to reassess what we're doing, and if you elect me on April the 19th, that is exactly what I intend to do. Maggie Freeman, A2.
Governance to me is going back as a, if I'm elected a board member, go back to the community, see what's needed in the school system. Right now, like David was saying, it's a pandemic, everybody's going wild. Bring that back to my fellow colleagues and present that to the superintendent of school, whoever that may be at the time, and work with the superintendent, held them accountable. Um, as a, as the chair, as the chair of the Head Start Policy Committee, we make that decision for our pre-K students. Governance, the money that's needed for them to, uh, uh, get taught. Last week, we just approved the budget for next year's school year of just over $10 million for our pre-K, pre-K three and four students to continue their education. That's about it.
This is the second question, other question, and then we started to do this way. What is the most important policy you feel needs to be adopted or revised by the board? You want me to read it again?
Yes, please.
Okay. What is the most important policy you feel needs to be adopted or revised by the board?
The most important policy that needs to be adopted or revised? Okay, so... See, I, it's, it's so many, right? But here's my thing. As a parent, I want to make sure that my children are in loving environments. So in terms of policy, I would, I would agree with Ms. Freysen in reference to mental health checks, um, making sure that the children are healthy when they come into the school and when they leave, um, a holistic approach to the child as opposed to just, you know, reading, writing, math, history. Um, we need to know that these children are okay socially, especially since COVID. Um, some children haven't been outside. They do not know how to get back into being in a classroom with other people. Sometimes they're scared to even interact with other kids. So I think just a more holistic approach to, um, educating the whole child, making sure that they are okay, um, and then sending them on their way. When the children want to come back into school, you know we're doing the right thing. Right? Like when they are happy to go to school, when they're like, mommy, I have this plate tomorrow and I'm, you know, excited, well, can you be at one circle? Then you know that your child is in an environment where they are thriving. Thank you.
This is a question for our audience at home. It's possibly they didn't hear me. It's a new thing, so I'm going to pitch for some, I need to read this to you. What is the most important policy you feel needs to be adopted or revised by the board?
So in the strategic plan, right, and for those that don't know, right, it was a community-based effort to figure out where we move forward as a district and as a community. Uh, there are several priorities. One of those priorities talks about positivity. I believe it's the third one. And in that priority, um, is the district positive cultural rubric. And right now, right, that is set to be implemented a few years from now, right? Building on what was just shared, I'm in absolutely agreement. Our kids deserve warm and inviting and joyful classrooms, and that doesn't happen by magic. It happens by a lot of really hard work and a lot of dedication by the leadership at the top to ensure that this is prioritized. In my campaign, right, I have an equity platform, and the second priority is all about positive classrooms. My push in terms to answer your question is that we need to vote as a board member to fast-track the positive cultural rubric, to ensure that we are pushing and, um, making sure that we are pushing for the things that we know are important, like positivity, like joy, and like warmth. If we are going to say that these things are important, like SEL, we have to ensure that we have the policies to back it up. And that takes a vote, that takes priority, and that is a part of my campaign for A1 Thomas Luna for Newark School Board. Thank you.
Well, the policy that I would like to adapt is personal to me, of course, is social and emotional learning and mental health. I am a survivor of child sexual abuse, domestic violence, homelessness, and gun violence. So I know what some of our children and parents are experiencing. Most of our children in our schools and their parents are experiencing the same thing that I have been through. So we need more, we need wraparound programs in every school. Wraparound programs consist of meeting food, before and after care, healthcare providers, tutoring, mentorship, mentorship programs. These are what you call wraparound programs. Transportation to meet not just the children's needs, but the parents' needs too, because if a house is dysfunctional, chances are the children are too, and they are going to bring that behavior into the school. But if we have mentor programs, faith-based organizations inside of the schools, sororities, parroties that can come into the school and mentor our children and see that people care for them, not just the teachers, but we need individuals who actually care and give their time, love, and support for them. I didn't have that when I was in school. I didn't even know I had a mental illness. I went through so much tragedy not even knowing I was traumatized. I went to Rutgers University to study social work, and during my classes, I said, oh no, what is this, they're talking about me? But I didn't even know that maybe that I was traumatized because of all the experiences I went through as a young adult and as a, and as a woman. So I say wraparound programs must be included. It must be a policy to bring these communities' pets into the, into the schools and just care for our children. It's, it's a fact that if we bring a child to a warm and welcoming environment, their IQ rises. So that's what we need. We need more social workers in the school. I can't, I can't express that enough. We need social workers in the school with therapies. Right now, we're short of social workers, we're short of teachers, and then there's teacher competency. They have to know the culture of the children that they are standing before to let them know, we understand you, because every time we say a child has a, a behavior issue, it may not be a behavior issue. It could just be their culture or where they're from it from. So I say we have to develop a development plan, but teachers can have these development learners throughout the school year, throughout the district, every year. So that's, that's actually on what policies that need to be adapted and what needs to come inside of the school board. Vote A7 Allison K. James as your next Newark Public School Board Member. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. James. Ms. Freeman?
Thank you. So the first thing that I would like to say is that, um, every 10 years or so, there's always a master plan for the city of Newark, for the school systems, corporations, everybody plans ahead. Um, sometimes we need a new plan, and often we just need to do the plan as it's intended. So the most recent one that I would say that comes across my mind, and Tommy Luna mentioned that it was the Clarity 2020, which, um, focused on a lot of different components, but one I like to hone in on is access. The community, the local organizations, such as the ones that Allison Freysen mentioned, they do not have access to the children to even mentor, to even start the conversation the way that it was originally intended. Your small business owners do not have access to help train in the trades and, and pass on their legacies so that the community can actually grow. So we can have policies all day long, but if we never implement what we say, if we constantly keep changing hands at the expense of our children, our communities, then we will be in this life cycle past our life cycle. So we can go through policy one by one, but at the end of the day, we just need to do the work that is intended to do for our children and community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Mr. Wilson?
Yes. Um, most important policies to me is to bring back things where when I was in school. When I was in school, I went to Pascha and I was a school. I was a part of the band at Pascha and I was a school. They had an after-school program. Schools stayed open until 10:00 PM at night. You know, you had services, you had to play basketball, you have rec, had open gym. When your parents came in there to play basketball, you watched them play. You had the Weekway High School Marching Band, which I was a part of since I was in the fourth grade. Um, that week, that band is no longer available. So you had a mentor there by the name of Darryl Taylor that no longer, that, no longer there at that program. We have a program at Weekway Park that the public schools, those who take advantage of down at, uh, Weekway Park Sports Authority. We have to have programs for our kids to stay off the streets, right? Things to do, uh, bring trades back to the schools. That can help, that's, that could be a policy that can help the kids learn more, learn more, and, and be ready for the real world. If you figure out three o'clock, they go home, what do they do? They sit around, play video games, or they get themselves in trouble. So either before, we, we need to have some before care and after care. Look at before care. Last week, we had a 15-year-old kid got shot by a cop, 7:00 in the morning. If the school was open, he'd have been inside, inside the school, he'd have been safe. If the school was open past 4:00, 4:00 o'clock, the kid would have something else to do besides go home and, you know, not, not be, um, a statistic, another statistic. Phil Wilson, A, A3.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. And lastly, Ms. Murray Thomas.
So I want to add something to the question. I know it was specifically around, uh, was it adopted or revising, but I want to talk about actual implementation, right? We have some policies on the board right now in the district that are really good but need to be better implemented. One of them is one that was actually advocated by a student, alumni of art, not university arts, uh, but he works at all of these high schools, David Dowdy. And last year, he proposed that we bring back to the district a policy that would make sure that students had a voice at the board level. And so we went this whole year, and that great policy somehow still was not on the agenda until I brought it up and said, y'all, we already have students and parents and advocates who work together to get this policy written and actually implemented. And so I'm proud to say that I brought this up to my committee on student life, and we were able to get unanimous approval for it. But the question now is, how are we making sure that we are being responsive to what these young people are saying? A lot of the things that my fellow candidates are saying, our young people are telling us right now on Instagram, on TikTok, in their suspensions, in their absence, in their fights. They're telling us that they need us to listen to them. They're telling us that they need more support for mental health. They're telling us that, you know, just learning the dot and the i's and cross the t's in school is enough, but they need actual connections to college and career. And so if as a board, we have a policy that will allow us to shape policy based off what young people say, and that's what we need to do. And so I'm proud to have advocated to get that board, that policy back on the board for a vote this year, but now I got unfinished business because I need to make sure it's being implemented with fidelity. It's not enough for us to say that we're going to do the right things, but we have to actually have the people on the board to get it done. I'm one of those people. I've been doing it, and with your vote, I'll continue to do it.
Candidates, the pandemic has widened the inequities of districts throughout the United States, and Newark is no different. Our children are our greatest asset. We must model positive behaviors for our children to emulate. Our students in Newark need to know they are valued. The question I present before you has to deal with finance. The budget will be voted on by the community. What would you want the community to know about the billion-dollar school district budget before they vote? Billion-dollar school district budget before they vote? Mr. Philip Wilson?
I'm a person that talks to the people instead of just sitting behind the door asking for their vote. Well, I will, I will go to the community like I've been doing and ask them, tell them, this is what it is. This is the budget that's before you. I think you need to have a voice at the table and talk about this, not just go ahead and vote yes, 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 because that person's on the slate or that person's on the team. You have, they have to know what you're voting for. Um, I'm on, like I said, I'm on the Head Start Committee, and we had a budget in front of us. It was 67 pages. I read every last piece of page, and I voted no on it so far. We came back, we had an understanding to, to pass the vote, but we, we need to know what's going on, what's, what's, what's every dollar's being spent on for our kids in our community. Not saying we got a half a million dollars for, maybe $500 million for budget and $500 million for school supplies. We need to know what this money's being spent on, and I would like to have some of that money spent on CTE. I think every, every school in the city of Newark, I repeat, every school in the city of Newark, a child should be learning a trade in every school, starting in grade school all the way up. It's, 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 it's teaching them career readiness. During the pandemic, like you said, if a child learned the trade, they couldn't have been out there working instead of sitting at home in the house. A Home Depot didn't close, Lowe's didn't close, gas stations didn't close. You drove around the city of Newark, you see houses being built. Everything was still going on, but business was regular nine to five. You were working at home or you was unemployed. If your child learned the trade, they'd have been working. So vote for Phil Wilson, A1. I mean, sorry, not A1. Sorry. A3, Phil Wilson.
Ms. Williams?
So I would say what I would want the community to know is that this is the largest budget in the state, and we need to be responsible with it. We need to make sure that parents and students, um, are in, are, are involved in the talks. And I think we need full transparency. Uh, we need, you know, we need good old-fashioned audits. We need to know where this money is going because it would be a shame if we got this money and we didn't have the results to back it up. So when you are given this much opportunity, we shouldn't squander it. It needs to get directly into the classroom. The students need to feel it, and we need to do right by the people at the center of it all, the students. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Freeman?
I've had the opportunity to answer this question. I've been dying to talk about budgets for a long time. So one thing I would like the community to know, and the students, the staff, and anyone who is listening, is that we are the fiduciary, meaning the ones who hold the bucket of money. $1 billion is on the table. But it is a river that is flowing far and fast away from you, your education, your homes, your children, and it's not staying here, not with the contractors that are working on the schools, not with your staff who are calling out all the time because they're afraid to go to work, not with a lot of people who are just lawsuits beyond measure because there's so much going on that we cannot get down to just basic education. So the first thing is, what are we spending our money on, which is a lot of different things that we should not have to. But even right now, I'm, as a candidate, right, I'm right now trying to fight to get wires fixed right now by Verizon and Altice in the schools because basic communication does not exist. To hear that from my parents and a school that has had five fights break out in one week, that the teachers don't even have a working phone system to call for emergency help is a problem. Simple, basic thing as telephones are not in all our schools. Wiring... Wiring to make sure that everybody could communicate. Walkie-talkies to make sure that they can talk to each other in the school for safety purposes. How can we operate like this with $1 billion or more on the table? Because it's actually more than $1 billion when you look at the sponsorships, when you look at the volunteer services, the sweat equity with the volunteers come with value too, and expertise. The figure probably is $5 billion on the table collectively that pour into your children every day. So, the reality is this. A2 is the true community's voice. I've been in this fight for 10 years in the community with Weekway Park Affairs. And if you have visited the park, that's a wonderful Essex County Park. And you have seen the improvements within the last 10 years. Just know that my name is attached to it. Building community centers and fields and safe spaces for children to go and enjoy life the way it's intended. A2 Maggie Freeman.
Thank you. Mr. Luna?
Yeah, so with the budget, what I would want people to know is two things. One, that there is a budget hearing coming up, so they can attend, ask all the questions they want. They can be there to push on the things that they feel are more important and to get clarity on exactly where that money is going on a district level. I think the second thing is to let them know that there are organizations and advocates that are pushing and want their support to get their insight into what that budget should be before it happens, right? In NPS, right, there's a really tricky thing where the governor has to announce his budget so that NPS can decide their budget within a very short two-week window. And there's a lot of scrambling that's going along, and I believe that in that scramble, there are many things that are lost. In my head, I believe that it doesn't have to be like that. In the platform that I have under my community side, I'm asking to create through bylaws, constant community forums to talk about the issues that are important to our community. I believe wholeheartedly that one of those forums should be strictly about budgets, that we should do it in October and November, so that as a board member, we have a very strong idea of what our community is asking for, what they are wanting, and what they deserve in our schools. That way, when we have the forecast from the governor, we're not scrambling to figure out what it is we should put, what it is we shouldn't. We have a very solid plan based on community input to let us know the direction that we should take to fully support the people that are put into office and ensure kids, families, and teachers are getting exactly what they deserve and what they need. A1 Thomas Luna.
Ms. Fysen?
I say site-based budgeting, which means allowing schools to identify the needs for the schools and then request budgeting from the district. We are on the outside. We don't know what's going on in the inside. And the true people that know what these schools need are the individuals that are leading the schools from the inside, the students, the administrators, the leaders inside of the school. Parents are frustrated. They're putting, they're trying to determine the school their children are going to because what zip code you live in determines how much funding you get for your school. And there shouldn't have to be a battle between the parents because I want my child to go to, let's say, Science Park because they have X amount of funding and they have an excellent enrollment plan. Schools are failing. Schools have low enrollment. But if we put equity, everybody get a fair amount on their budget, there wouldn't be any battle between what school, even if you go to a charter school or a public school, there shouldn't be a battle because now we have equity spreading across the entire Newark district. So, we let the leaders within the school decide and determine what our school needs. Every school don't need the same thing. So, if you want to be fair, you put equity on top of the list of the budget and make sure that every school across the board receives the same allowed amount or even more because you can lead everyone to the water, but only some people get to drink the water. So, that's not being fair. So, again, I would say bring equity to the school and site-based committees to determine what the schools need.
Thank you. Ms. Murray Thomas?
So, the first thing that people should know about the budget is that it's yours. As a voter, it is yours. Some of the things that I'm hearing from my colleagues on the board around making sure their community forums, that schools and school communities get to actually govern what happens in their budget, that exists in Newark Public Schools. Every principal has to present to their school community, to their parents, what the proposed budget is for that year, right? And if you actually compare Newark Public Schools and our budget process, the fact that we do quarterly forecasts, budget projections, and our community forums annually, quarterly, every district in this country does not do that. It's actually a rarity, but it's a best practice. And so, in Newark Public Schools, we've got a lot of work to do, but we're actually ahead of the curve when it comes to how we approach our budgeting and our community impact approaches to finance. The second thing you should know is that it is underfunded. Even with $1.3 billion, the largest school district in the state of New Jersey, we are still one of the most underfunded districts in the state according to the state's own funding formula. We are. And so, we have work to do, not just at the local level, but at the state level to advocate for making sure that our young people have the resources they need to learn. It doesn't make sense that depending on what ward you live on and the type of school, that you could have an entirely different education to the person who you live next door from. And so, we have to make sure that our school has the funding that it needs. And then, lastly, one thing you should know about the budget is that this district is investing in college and career pathways. Every single comprehensive school in this city, in this district, has a partner with a university, has a CTE focus and investment, and a professional connection to a company or organization so the young people there don't just graduate with a diploma, but preparation for their career. So, you need to know that it's yours. You need to know that needs to be held accountable so it can continue to be yours. It's underfunded, but it also is making progress as a district compared to what we've been before. And it's making progress not because it just happened, but because we fought for it. Because we have to keep fighting for our district, keep fighting for our young people like the people before have fought for us.
Thank you.
Just let the candidates know we're doing good with time. We want to get through everything and want everybody to be able to answer all of the questions. All right? Next question, question three, teaching and learning. Teaching and learning are critical areas in the overall district's educational operation. Parents are concerned about learning loss due to the pandemic. Is there any policy you think needs to be adopted or revised by the board to accommodate the learning concerns? I can read that again. All right? We're going to start with you, Mr. Luna. You want me to read the question again?
No, thank you, I got it. Got you. So, it is no secret that COVID-19 had dramatic impacts on our kids, our teachers, our families. And what we're noticing as we are reopening and providing opportunities is that there is still a lot that we need to do. I think there are phenomenal teachers working extremely hard to do right by kids all across the city. I think there are families who are doing everything they can to partner. And even with that, it is still not enough for the larger gaps that we have post-COVID-19 in this time that we are in. Now, the board, right, did the right thing, right? By voting to use ESER funding to provide tutoring programs to kids. Every piece of research says that tutoring programs is the way to go in terms of balancing the academic learning loss amongst kids, right? And I definitely commend Ms. Murray Thomas on taking that vote because it was the right thing to do. What I would also push for, and it's under my equity plan, is that we start to build, it'll be a policy, build an infrastructure to continue that tutoring program after the ESER funding dries up, right? ESER funding is supposed to last for three years. My hunch, being a teacher, tells me that kids are going to need more tutoring even after three years. I think it is a step in the right direction to take that vote, and we have to start building the infrastructure right now to continue those programs after that funding dries up so that we're continuing to provide the academic supports for students so they can get what they need and they can live the choice-filled lives that we promise them every single day that they come into our schools. Thank you.
Ms. James Fysen?
Yes, so what I think a policy that needs to be adopted is no child left behind. And when I say no child left behind, I mean that every child deserves an exclusive education, an equal education, and have the ability to learn on their own terms. Meaning, every child's learning ability is different. That's where social and emotional comes into play. Every child can learn as quickly as other children can learn. So, we need to adapt the no child left behind policy. That's what we need to do. And we have to do equal education. The Newark Board of Education must improve its tools for assessing. I cannot stress that fact enough. As a certified social worker, I know what our children are going through. I'm in the schools, I'm talking to the school, advocating for our children's well-being and their education and make sure that they are receiving the assistance they need from the social workers and from the guiding counselors to make sure they can graduate to the next level. So, my policy would be the no child left behind by providing an equal education for all across the board. Thank you. Vote A7 Allison K. James Fysen.
Mr. Wilson?
To help with the learning laws, I think we need to have before and after care. Meaning as in, students coming early, that's the half the learning loss. If we have a student here that go to a universal high school, she may teach maybe the top of her class. You might have another student that may be the lower part of her class. Maybe she can come in and help mentor that student to get that student up to up to grade level, not to up to where she's at, but this bridge the gap between bottom to the top. Put them right in the middle. Meaning before and after. Because COVID has took a hit to everybody across the nation, even in Newark. Students are learning less. We need to bring them back up to speed. So, like I said, we have after-school programs. Put more money in before, put more money in before care and after care for students. Meaning as in to help them more, to bring them more up to speed.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Ms. Murray Thomas? I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Ms. Murray Thomas?
So, last night, I was on my way home, and before I went home, I went by McDonald's on Springfield Avenue. And in the driver's, like the little window, was actually one of my students, one of my kids from my organization, She Wins. And, you know, she looked at you, her hair was all done, her nails was done. But I'm like, okay, how was school? And what she told me was that she's getting tutoring. She's getting tutoring because when she came back after the pandemic, being back at school, she said, and this is her quote, "I just lost motivation. And so, I almost didn't graduate, but because of tutoring, I'm back on track." And so, when I think about the things that we've done as a district just in these past two and a half years alone during the pandemic, we've implemented AMISTAD under my leadership as chair of program and instruction. I am proud to say that AMISTAD exists in every single one of our K through 5 classrooms, and we have a brand-new curriculum being written for 612. But at the same time, we have kids who they can't even get to AMISTAD if they can't get to school, and they can't get to school if they're not socially, emotionally well. And so, my belief is that we need to continue to have more guardrails in place where we catch students before they fall. Had it not been for my student having a CST team, having a guidance counselor that was checking on her, that did that transcript audit and saw that she was behind, that if she didn't get tutoring or extra help, she would not graduate, she wouldn't be where she is today. And so, as a district, we have policies currently in place to catch students before it's too late. But we need to make sure that what's working at some schools is scaled to every school, right? What works? We have models of excellence in the district, right? I know we sometimes like to talk about this district from a deficit base, but we need to shift the lens. We have assets in our school. So, there are things that are working. How do we scale what works and get it everywhere and get rid of the things that don't? Dorian Murray Thomas, A4. My team, A5, A6.
Thank you, Ms. Murray Thomas. Ms. Wilson? Williams, I'm sorry, Ms. Williams.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute.
Ms. Williams, I'm sorry.
So, from a parent's perspective, learning loss and how would I combat it? So, for me, it was rough. I have six children from 17 to 3. So, as you can imagine, I have a 12th grader, an 11th grader, an 8th grader, and a 3rd grader. And then, I have the two babies. All of them pulling on me during the virtual portion of 2020, 2021 school year. And so, I would say that that would partially be due to me. But what I'm grateful for is the loving teachers that awaited them when they came into school. I appreciated the fact that they were allowed to have tutors and that when I needed it and technology, you know, was short, I was able to get help with the Wi-Fi. I think that just reaching the children and their families as a whole makes sense. And so, I just am grateful for what they have done. But to improve it, I think that we need to focus more on tutoring and technology and get that up and running and more stable than just, you know, for a certain amount of time. It needs to be implemented long-term. Thank you.
Question four. Can we have Ms. Freeman?
Okay, I just want to make sure I wasn't Ms. Wilson. Thank you so much for this opportunity. All right, all right. Got it. All right, thank you so much. So, the first thing I would like to say about teaching and learning is that as a district, we need to first understand that it is not our job to do the parent's job, right? But what we are responsible for doing is creating the resource and the foundation, a safe space to tap into so that you can lead your instruction, your homes, your community, from what we have established in each classroom with all teachers, because they have homes too. And we must not forget that they should not have to think about a paycheck versus spending quality time in their homes. They should not be mandated to stay beyond a decent hour, honestly. Because why? There are capable people, right, in their own community who can do the same task and see the children seven days a week and hold them accountable. So, when we think of the concept of teaching, everyone in this room, everyone in this city has the ability to teach. But what message do we want to send? Do we want them to be bombarded with stolen cars and gun violence? Do we want those lessons to be learned? Because they're being learned right now as we speak. The Citizen App, which is on my phone, probably has at least three alerts every other hour. Teaching is across the board. Sometimes, it doesn't even require a dollar to send a message. So, all I can say is that we have tons of resources, hands-on approaches, that most likely will be implemented after hours by the families, by the organizations, by your small business owners, by all the people who see your children walk the streets, visit the corner stores, go into your local parks, go into their family and friends' houses. But while they're doing that, let's make sure that they're equipped to send a message that we provide at the Newark Public School level. If you elect me on April 19th, A2 is Maggie Freeman. Again, I'm 1,000% the community perspective with no agenda attached to my name. And I'm not saying that everybody here doesn't have a job to do because each one has a family to take care of, and they deserve that right. But at the end of the day, I'm always going to be community first. Thank you so much.
Question four. This question involves school personnel. What qualities should the district look for when recruiting teachers and staff? What strategies should the district use to hire teachers for hard-to-fill vacancies such as the math and the science areas? And let's also address special need teachers. Mr. Luna?
Absolutely. To best screen candidates for teaching, right? And I use that word purposely because I believe if we are going to hire individuals to take care of our kids, we have to be sure that we are hiring the best. Our kids, our families, our teachers, we don't have time for anything mediocre, right? And so, when you do that, I think there's a number of tactics that we can use, some of which are already used throughout the interview process. One of them is, you know, understanding the philosophy of candidates. Make sure that it's student-centered, make sure that it is strength-based, make sure that they know how important their job is and the commitments that are required to ensure that they're providing every providing everything that our students deserve. I also think an added benefit would be a mock lesson that they could do at schools so that administration, fellow teachers, even students can get in on that action and ensure that even in that mock lesson, whoever is in front of them is at least equipped to communicate effectively, to make some kind of connection, and to grasp some of the content that they are asked to teach. When it comes to special needs and hard-to-fill areas like math and science, the first thing that comes to mind is allocating money in the budget to provide incentives to draw in those teachers, right? It is no secret to anybody that knows the landscape of education in our city that there are a lot of competing organizations to teach for, right? And if you are a college graduate, fresh out, nine times out of 10, you're going to go where the money is. And if we can get aggressive in that recruitment, doubling up some of those stipends for students, for college graduates to become teachers, that makes us competitive. And at the end of the day, we want to be as competitive as possible because if we have fresh talent ready to serve our students, ready to be a part of faculties, ready to serve our city in the best capacity possible, we got to attract them, we got to celebrate them, and we got to assure that we are as competitive as possible. That will take action, that will take policy, and that is the vision that I can bring to this position for A1 Thomas Luna for Newark School Board. Thank you.
Ms. Williams? Would you like for me to repeat the question?
No, thank you. OK. So in 1990, when I moved to Newark in the seventh grade, I met Ms. Ross. She was my English teacher at Newton Street School. She took her time at lunchtime to teach me how to read out loud. I fell in love with school. I fell in love with her. She sat me down for SAT prep tests. She signed me up for the Newark Marching 100. She saw a child that was hurting from being taken away from her grandmother and not having any other family in Newark. And so she made me fall in love with reading. Now, 30 years later, with my children, I meet Ms. Delatorre, who has my son, who is special needs, and he's giving them the business. And this woman is like, no, Jason, every day you have a new slate. Every day you come in here, it's clean. No attitude, no stand outside the door, just come on in here and give me a hug. It is important for children to encounter people that love them and love the newness and freshness with them, that admire their differences and their uniqueness, and then wrap it up and 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 push it out into the world and say fly. And so I just think that teachers hold a special place somewhere in this budget. They need more resources, but I just think that we should take care of our personnel that take care of the children every single day. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Mary Thomas?
The first thing when it comes to personnel is credentials and compensation, right? So credentials, it's important for our young people to be educated by the best and the brightest, right? And a lot of times that means having a college degree, having a teacher certification. But I'd also wager that some of the best teachers you're going to meet may have not have ever stepped foot in a college classroom, they have never had a teacher credential, but can make sure your baby is good, right? So as a district, we need to prioritize two things. One, of course, making sure we hire people with the right credentials. But also, two, when we have people like Paris, right, who maybe, and some of which maybe don't always have some of the traditional credentials, but could be really great teachers and administrators, that we build pipelines to them getting those credentials. The second thing is cultural competence and meeting kids where they're at. We need kids who understand our babies and know them and love them and don't want them to change to fit a mold. Before I even got on the board, I was working for an organization that focused specifically on serving kids who were overage and undercredited, kids who went through the public schools that I help govern today, and none of it worked. And so they needed something different. They needed something that focused on social-emotional learning and mental health, trauma recovery, trades, right, and getting them credentials. And so it's important for us to have interventions and people in place in our district who don't see a kid and say that you're a problem, but say you're the solution. And if you're looking for a solution, I'm going to help you find one. And the fastest thing I think is important is making sure that we serve students regardless of their needs. What people don't know about me is that I have my own learning disability. And as a kid, I was acting out, and certain teachers thought it was because I was bad. It was actually because I needed a different kind of support. And so if it hadn't been for my mom, who was a public school and special education teacher herself at 18th Avenue, who advocated for me and those around me, I wouldn't be where I am today. So we need teachers and systems that understand, love, and respond to and serve every single kid. And last but not least, we need our babies to become teachers. That's why I'm proud to have a student here from University High School. Who knows at university, y'all have what? A teacher prep program. Making sure that we're building programs and pipelines for our students to become the teachers and educators, to give the students exactly what they need, which is, at the end of the day, themselves.
Thank you. Ms. Freeman?
Can you hear me a little better? Thanks. So when it comes to personnel, the first part of that word is the person, right? You have to think about the fabric that we're in, what our community is shaped like. And one phrase that constantly comes up is second chances. We're living in an environment where incarceration of certain demographics are at an all-time high. There are so many different things where single-parent homes exist, and the list can go on and on, with grandparents raising children. But when it comes down to the person, sometimes we get overloaded with thinking that a four-year degree answers all the questions in every home. It means that it's not the solution for everything that we endure. And the reality is, as Dorian, sorry, Mary Thomas, board member, sorry, candidate, board Mary Thomas has mentioned, is that we need to get down to the, how do we align these career paths, some goals, some real tangible goals for the children of today, right? That looks to me like a printing chips. And that starts as early as elementary school, such as Phil Wilson's statement earlier today. Because why? There are simple fundamental things that just do not exist. And I will talk about even my own education in Maple Avenue School, where we didn't have music, economics. I saw substitute teachers more than I saw an actual educator. That has not really changed today because the school is closed, and so are the visions of a lot of these institutions. It is a closed-minded approach. A2 Maggie Freeman is looking to open back up. We're trying to open back up our schools, not just physically, mentally as well. Thank you so much.
Mr. Wilson?
To piggyback on Ms. Thomas said, right, you don't need a four-year degree to teach. Me being a graduate of Exeter County Vocational, which is North Tech, I was honored to, by my mentor, Mr. Harris, to go back to give my teacher's degree back in 2001 to go to secondary route. So that's what I did. I became, I went back to get the secondary route, became a certified CTE teacher of auto collision. I went back to my automotive school to teach at North Tech. I was there for eight years, went to Union County Vocational, taught there for seven years, and I moved to Maryland and taught there for a year and a half before I got diagnosed with kidney failure. At the time, I'm three years post-kidney failure, my wife donated the kidney to me sitting here on my left-hand side right as we speak. So being a teacher taught me a lot of different things. You have different kids, different strategies, different, our kids are different. So it's not the hard work to become a teacher. You can go to the school, be secondary, go to alternate route. That's what I'm trying to say. You need to go to alternate route to become a teacher. You don't need a four-year degree to be a teacher or go to school for a thousand years to get a teacher's degree. Be the be the change that you want in the community. As in, if you want, you want to see a difference, go back to school, go the secondary route, and I'm pretty sure a board, a board will hire you somewhere. Vote A3 Phil Wilson.
Ms. Fysen?
So I talk a lot about trust building, so I'm going to be totally transparent here today. I failed math at Central High School, I failed math at Exeter County College, and I failed math at Rutgers University, Newark. And what I learned during these times is that math teachers, the math teachers that I had, they are, well, not, they had the time to tutor or to sit with me, to go over the lesson plan with me. So I say we need compassionate teachers who love the subjects that they teach. So these teachers, they were just there for a way of life. They needed a job, the math position was open, so they took it. So I had to do summer school just to graduate for out of Rutgers University, Newark, and go to get a degree because I failed math, not once, not twice, but three times. So I had to go to tutoring. So it was, it's very hard to say that we can, we can hire teachers for their credentials, but they don't have the passion for it or the compassion for it. They can still lack some things. I spoke earlier about culturally competent teachers. We have a teacher shortage. We have teachers that are not, I'm not going to say qualified, but are not able to teach the children that are in front of them because of the culture difference. The North Public School has a diverse culture, and our teachers must know the culture of our students in order to teach them. I cannot say that enough. There should be more social workers in the school, mentor programs to help, to help the students with their lesson plans. And I'm sure Dorian Murray Thomas can agree with me when I say mentorship works. She and I, we both have founders of mentor programs, and we empower the girls in the city to be mentored, to get tutors. And if they don't have the resources or their parents don't have the resources that the teachers are not giving them, we are the ones that stepping up to the plate and helping these children succeed in life academically and professionally. So I say we must have culturally competent teachers and teachers that are compassionate about the subjects they are teaching.
Thank you very much.
The following questions will be asked from a student's point of view, and all candidates will have the opportunity to respond. So the first question relates to mental health. As you know, there's a mental health crisis going on in schools. How do you plan to address this issue and what support services will be provided? You can go down the line.
Well, mentioned enough, I know that's, that's a huge thing, right? I think, to me personally, I think the state should be involved to come in because everybody's case is different. You have social workers inside the schools, but the social workers inside the schools would be like, oh, I got to call the state up, and it's a DIFIS case. I think that, I think the governor should work with the school district, or DIFIS should work with the school district to implement social workers from the state level inside the school so that the case will get out bigger, bigger than what it is, meaning as in, if you come to school with Ms. Max Socks on, these might think you have a mental health problem, and they really need to call DIFIS on you ASAP, and that's a waste of resources. I think, I think there should be caseworkers that's from the state inside the school's district. I think the state should hire more, and schools should put that in their budget, put that in their budget some way, somehow, to have caseworkers from the state level inside the school so that it, it'll stop the calls from going to the state that don't need to be. It could stop right there at that level. Hopefully, they can nail it in the bud right then and there. Thank you, Phil Wilson, A3.
Thank you. Ms. Mary Thomas?
So one thing I didn't say in the story that I told you about my student earlier is that I'm proud to say that she is on track to graduate. She was a student at Behringer High School, and she's mentoring other young people. And one thing about this particular young person, she is very unapologetic in telling her story. I think it's important that we give our young people space to tell their stories. Our young people, our communities have survived the impossible, and they're still winning. And so how do we make sure that they know that they're not alone? How do we make sure that the things that they went through, other generations of kids don't have to go through again? Like, first off, is giving them space. The second thing, though, is to actually measure what the issues are and so we can actually find the right solutions. One of the things that we have in the district is this program called Rethink, and it's a social-emotional learning platform where we track how our students are faring with their mental health, we track their ACE factors. But at the board level, we haven't been getting any real data on what those outcomes were. So one of the things I said was, OK, I think it's good that we're doing this work, but as a board member, I need to know everything that's going on. So I need you to give me the data on exactly how our students are faring. And what I see is what you just said, was that our students are making progress, but they still need support. So the first thing we need is we need to measure the data that captures our students' feeling and what they're going through, even if we're, we know that that data isn't going to be pretty. We need to be honest about what they're going through so we can advocate for the right solutions. The second thing is we have to have a restorative approach. Prior to me even joining the board, I worked for an organization where I had young people who were suspended, but rather than just keeping them outside of school, we brought them in the building. We offer counseling, we offer academic supports. So we need to have a culturally responsive and trauma-formed response to our kids, not just in schools, but across the entire district. And lastly, one thing that the city of Newark is doing under Mayor Baraka's leadership is that for every 10 police officers that are hired, every, there's a social worker hired. So we need to do that within the district. For every 10 school resource officers, for every 10 whomever, we need to make sure we have more clinicians, more social workers in our buildings. And if you are a parent or a voter in the city of Newark, you need to go to your school's community budget meeting and advocate so that for, in this budget season right now, advocate to make sure there's more clinicians and social workers in your school this year.
So I have a special needs son, and around 2014, it was a really rough year for us. He had a psychiatrist, a psychologist, a neurologist. He had a behavioral specialist, and it was very difficult for me, but, you know, I'm supermom. So I just picked him up from school, took him to his appointments, paid the copay, and came on and restarted my day. But I also had five other children to care for. I think that it would be so beneficial for families to have these services inside the school or at least in the vicinity of the school. Driving to Mountainside to get him care, driving to Hamilton at the Children's Specialized Hospital was very difficult and trying for my family. I think these services need to be centralized, they should be a part of the school district. The resources are there. With this extra influx of money, we should be providing these services for children. We have to take off the stigma of mental health services in our community, and we have to say that it is OK to say that you need help and you need a break, and, and your mom can come too. You want mom to come in this session? Let's get mom in here. Let's get your siblings in here. I think that nurturing the whole entire family is the key to this problem and removing the stigma of mental health services. Thank you so much. I'm A6. This is A4, and Danny Gonzalez is A5.
Thank you first, the question. Every day I'm in the classroom, and those needs are extremely real for a lot of our students. And in fact, when you, when you first asked it, this past Saturday, we were canvassing and had a long conversation with Ms. Carmen, and she said, I have two kids in the district, and they're not OK, her words, they're not OK. What, what can we do about that? And I was like, that's a great question. What services do your school offer? And she says, I don't even know. I was like, have you called? I, I'm not really getting through to anybody. And I'm like, OK. In my head, right, and this is, this is not a point to blame, there's a lot going on, but in my head, there has to be strong communications sent out to let families know what services are available, not only from the schools, from the city, and from the state, and from the county. There is a lot of really hard-working people looking to create safety nets for all of our kids, and I think the more families know about that, the better off our kids are going to be. And that comes on our responsibility to ensure that we are effectively communicating between our district and the city and kids and families. I also think, and, and, you know, Ms. Freeman brought it up, is that there are a number of organizations in our city that are looking to provide services for youth, looking to provide programming for our youth. And I think one of the tasks that we have as a board is to ensure that, one, we recognize how many of those organizations actually exist, and then, two, ensure that we are building the right kinds of avenues of communication and connection to funnel students into those organizations. How many kids would benefit from spending the rest of their day outside at a park? My hunch tells me a lot, right? How many, how many students would benefit from spending their time playing sports after school with other kids? My hunch tells me a lot. There are a lot of resources and opportunities in our school, and with A1 Thomas Luna at the school board, you can guarantee that we are ensuring that that communication is constant, consistent, and direct between our schools and our family all the time. Thank you.
Of course, I'm a certified social worker. I work with the Department of Child Protection and Permanency. Mr. Wilson, Mr. Wilson identifies us as DIFIS. We're no longer DIFIS. However, I have some inter illness, you know? I have anxiety, grievance, and trauma. This school year, my, my daughter, she's This school year, my, my daughter, she's my adopted daughter, she lost her biological father during COVID-19. I became her social worker. I became her therapist, but I also knew that I had to identify, I had to provide services for her outside of the home. So I initiated, initiated perform care. Perform care comes to your home, it comes to your school, wherever you at to assist you. So there are resources out there that we need to know about because you make one phone call to perform care, they're showing up at your door. Is there a crisis in your house? But the district also needs to hire social workers on a bachelor level. Right now they only hire licensed or masters, but there are bachelors out here with master's degrees that could come into the school and help with the social worker shortage. So everything that I, I'm running for the board because everything here is personal to me, the mental health, social and emotional learning, these things are personal to me. I never received any type of therapy for what I went through. Child sexual abuse, homelessness. I was a, I was like a block, a kid that blocked something in school. Then I became quiet. No one wondered why I, I became quiet. Because you have to identify with these students that you are learning with. Why is Allison so quiet now? She was happy-go-lucky. She was the life of a party, but now we can't get anything out of her. My quietness was a cry for help. So again, I have to say you have to go back to cultural competency and hire social workers in the school, teach these teachers, get professional development for these teachers to know why Billy is not singing anymore because Billy is crying at night, all night because something is going on at Billy's home or in the school that we need to identify with. So put more social workers in the school regardless of their level of education. I know interns come into the school, but then when the interns leave, you don't hire them because they don't have a, a master's degree. Because when you're interim, you're doing bachelor, you're a bachelor, bachelor degree. But you got to get social workers in the school. As a certified social worker with the Department of Child Protection and Permanency, sitting here with mental health challenges and learning impairments, I, I cannot express how important it is to have these services, especially the wraparound services that I mentioned before. Wraparound service provides you with everything, not just the children, but the families too.
Thank you. My name is Allison James, A7, vote April 19.
So I guess I'm next, right? Okay, so during the pandemic, and I'm gonna kind of say my personal story, my own child had a cry out for help in which I had to find a resource externally because it wasn't a resource in the school to kind of address his needs. And what I found out is that he was like so many youth that we mentor are dating out, as well as our coaches and adults and seniors that I see every single week. I have one coach on the staff that has lost 35 members to COVID and his family, 35 members. How do you cope with grief to that magnitude? And then to hear several different players or students alike lose their, their immediate relatives every other week there was a loss. So when we think about mental health, who really is determining what's normal? You know, we have to get down to that because if we over mandate, over police, over report, some of it is just, how do you cope with yourself beyond the negative impacts in your life? Whether it's through gun violence, whether it's through overdose, because I've experienced that too, having to revive two people on Bergen Street in Newark, knocking on the door of the fire departments, right outside their door, just witnessing the trauma with children standing by, seeing exactly what I saw, being a part of search and rescues inside of the park and outside of, kids missing, fires and so many traumas that are in our community that are not being addressed by our leadership and on other levels. But then when we come back to school, that should be the one place that remains a safe haven, outside of your parks, outside of some of the homes. There's so much going on and when I tell you the list has quadrupled, it's no longer what we imagined exists yesterday. It is amplified, it is almost as if we are in war with ourselves. So I say all that to say that mental health is a new concept post-COVID, post this pandemic, through this war that it may turn into World War III. We do not know what is next. So we have to reimagine what is next and all I can say is God help us all.
Thank you. The second question relates to the disconnect between students and parents concerning school board decisions. Decisions are made without the input of the parents. Do you think it's important that we fix that issue and what is one idea you suggest?
That question is correct.
How many parents knew about this panel meeting tonight in schools? Kind of my school didn't know, both schools didn't know. My, my child goes to ECC South and one goes to Chancellor Avenue School. They didn't know until I said it. But we need to have more parent engagement, you know? If you have more parent engagement in, with the, with the parent, as in with the PTO, active PTO, as in parents actually show up and come, you know, you have more parents waiting in line for something else than come and see what's, what's wrong with the school. The first day of school, they, they sit in line outside. First PTO meeting, you got one parent there. Why is that? We need to get back to disconnect or find a reason or resource, how we get more parents involved in the school until it's too late. Me, Phil Wilson, I will try to engage more in parents as in the vice president of the PTO for ECC South. I like to, I stay in contact with the parents, I stay in contact with the dad network, with the fathers. I invite them out to our deals. We can have a snack, we can talk about things. I, I, I'm active in my children's activities. Even my daughter goes to school in West Orange, I'm out there active. My other daughter goes to school in East Orange District, I'm active in that. So I'm, I'm pulling all the way around, I'm trying to stay active in all, in all, in all, in all my children's activities. Even when I was going through dialysis, I was still going, active in all the, in all the activities. So with me being, saying that, I'm gonna be the voice for the, for, for the people, for the parents and for the community. Try to bridge the gap between all of them and bringing everybody to the table. Phil Wilson, A3.
I think this is such an important question. I remember this was maybe less than a year of my time on the board and the board at the time was considering limiting public speaking time. And I was one of the only board members to say that is absolutely not going to happen, not on my watch. It is our job as a board, it's our job as a community to listen to every single person in our community, including our parents, including our students, including people who do not agree with us because that is okay and that is the right. And so the first thing is we need to know that as a district and as a community, parents, students are not an opposition, a position, they're our partners. And so even if we disagree, we need to find a way to advance and make sure we get things done on behalf of kids. The second thing that has been super important to me, just as a chair of program and instruction, which is making sure that we have opportunities for parents beyond the scope of a board meeting, which is very rigid. You've got Roberts rules, you've got policies, but for parents to actually be able to engage with board members, with the district and see what's happening in their schools. And so I created the community roundtables so that every single quarter, the district has to report out to the community, not in a board meeting, but in a, a more low-stake setting about what are some of the things that we're doing in our district to advance student learning? What are some of the challenges that we're having and how are ways that we can partner with our community to get this done? Because our parents are our partners, they are not the problem. And that has to be the mindset of every single board member. That has been my mindset as a board member and it hasn't, it hasn't just been my mindset. I've made policy decisions and programming decisions around it. And so if you elect me, that's what I'll continue to do. And the last thing, I'm gonna be quiet, is that in addition to parent voice, we have to amplify youth voice. Our young people shouldn't come into schools or come into board meetings and not know that it is their place. Just like I said, this is our budget, it's our young people's budget too. So I need to see more young people at board meetings, I need to see more young people at committee meetings, I need to see more young people in space and it's our job to let them know that they belong there and that we need their voices and the voices of their parents and families in order to make Newark schools actually move forward.
Thank you. I'm going to repeat the question.
Yes, please.
Okay. This question relates to decisions being made without the input of parents or students. Do you think it's important to fix that issue and what is one idea that you would suggest?
Okay, so that's why I'm running, because I am a parent. I am the parent and I'm, I, I am standing solid in this fact that it is a partnership between the board and the parents. It is also a partnership between the board and the students. But when parents give you their children and they say, could you please educate my child? I do not expect that my child come home worse off, hurt, needing emotional help from going to school. It is important that we are at the table. That's the reason why I am here, to be at this table. Because I'm not only representing my children, I'm representing the community's children. For example, because my children are in my house, doesn't mean that your children don't affect my household. That's why it's important for everyone that can and that lives in the city of Newark to get out to vote. Because that same child that stole that car is the child that is missing in education somewhere and the system is broke. And we need to find out why they are not in school, why they choose not to be there, why they don't feel safe there and why they are not safe in this community. So I'm running because I'm the parent and we need a voice on this board and we need to make sure that it is heard loud and clear. I want my child safe, I want my child educated and I want my child loved, period.
In, again, my community plan, there's three policy pieces. One of them is to create consistent community forums. So this question is near and dear to my heart, right? When, when we were looking for a new superintendent, the district had several community forums on the same night in different high schools. Mine was at Central. And when I went there, it was awesome. Like there was food, so people could break bread, they could talk, it was very informal. It was hosted by community members. You know, the great Wilhelmina Holder is no stranger to anybody in this room. She was a facilitator and it was something that felt really powerful and it was something that felt very meaningful. And in my head, I'm like, we can do this again. We can do this consistently and if we do it right, we can make this a tradition in our city that when it comes to education, when it comes to this village, we're all in. And we're all in multiple times throughout the year and we're all in very specifically for our kids. I think outside of my platform piece, right? There are several places within our bylaws that allow for this to happen, one of which is allow for the creation of ad hoc committees. I think there is a lot of room to put those in place specifically over the things that are impacting our students, whether it be safety, whether it be programming, whether it be budgets, et cetera. And I would also push, because sometimes when these ad hoc committees create themselves, there isn't a lot of parent representation, I would push for quotas. We need more than half of the people on those committees to be parents. We need, you know, 25%, 35% to be students, to really ensure that we are getting the community voice. I also think, thinking outside the box, we can ensure that the committees where the board does a lot of its work, right? That those have spots, just like the board meetings, that are open to inviting members of the communities to talk before the committees where the board does most of its work. I think all those things in tandem can be amazing, can really rebuild the trust between the board and the community and can really get us to the place where we are using community voices to drive us forward and ensure that we are upholding the promises that we have to our kids. You will get that with board member Thomas Luna, A1, on April 19th. Thank you.
So student and parent engagement. I too am a parent. My daughter attends University High School and that was the reason why I ran for the chair of the PTSO at University High School, to be engaged with the school, the teachers and the parents. And I also encourage my daughter to get in, engaged with things going on in the school. She joined a debate team, she was on the volleyball and she receives after-school program. She goes to ALI after, after school. So she's not only engaged, so am I, but before we can even engage with the parents and students, you have to build trust. Because if there's no trust, you will never have that engagement with the parents, students and the teachers. And the way to do that, we have to build the morale around the students, let them trust us, let them know that we're there for them and not only listen to their voices, but hear their voices and concerns and, and give them results of what their concerns are. We can sit around a roundtable all day, every day, 65 days a year, but if we're not showing them results and letting them know that we, that they can't trust us, we'll never bridge that gap between the teacher, between teachers, parents and students' trust. We have a long way to go before we do, before we do that. This, this was an issue before the pandemic. So can you imagine where the trust is at now, after, post-pandemic? So it's going to take a while for us to do trust building with the students, but we have to start, we have to start with, with our students, with our parents, inviting them to more roundtables, getting them to the decision-making of what's going on in the school, to make them feel appreciated, my voice is being heard. So trust building is one of my campaign priorities on my, on my, on my ticket. It's because I want to see that engagement with parents. I'm at the school, my, my daughter, if I see my daughter's report card and it say she was tardy for a class, I'm calling that teacher, why is my child tardy? If she gets, if I know she's an honor roll student and then she goes down to a C plus, I want to know what's going on with her that she's, that she has a C plus. Is she talking at school? Is she's not doing her homework? So I'm an active parent, but we got to be able to empower all our parents to be, become active in the students and their children's education, not just the teachers being a part of the education system. Allison James Freeson, A7, vote for me on April 19th. Thank you.
So I am a parent on this panel and I'm going to share with you my most recent encounter that I experienced as a parent, allowing my child to experience a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, which it shouldn't have to be once-in-a-lifetime, but it is. We recently went out to Las Vegas to experience a tournament. They represented the regional area, which would mean the SS County, the state of New Jersey for this particular league. And when he went, he was amongst his community peers of about maybe up to 20 to 30 kids. And to hear the sound of the youth on a flight of maybe 200 people and the 30 or 40 that attended, to hear the, the sound of their first flight in the air, it's one that you just will never forget. To hear the sound of a youth that you inspire, encounter their first experience and make it impactful, along with their parents in tow. Their parents also were nervous because that was their first flight. And I say all that to say that the parents, as Adoria mentioned, are partners. As Ms. Freeson said, we have to build trust. It was unfortunate though, that in this same encounter, there was a student that the school decided that he wasn't worthy of going. They actually called the parent and persuaded the parent to say, you, you know, your child, he, he really doesn't need to go, he is such a terrible student, all these different things. But what if, what if that one child got to see the international gameplay? Mix of playing the game in sport with members from Canada and Mexico and all throughout the 50 states and territories? What if that opened the door for a path for a brighter future? Right now I don't know what will be the outcome of this, this student that struggles day in and day out and I could only hope that he is not going to fall victim to the streets and prison system and be left behind. But I say all that to say is that if we don't listen and trust one another, that your experience sometimes makes up for a college degree or anything that we are tearing and weighing against just simple care and concern of our students, then I'm not sure where we're going from here on out because that has to be re-instituted. We have to get back to the basics. Almost have to run this district like Big Mama's House every, every other weekend, you know? You go for that love, care, concern, some way you can trust, some way that you can confide in and will not be judged. And right now we are judged just way too much. We have to get back to the basic format of education, which is love, care, concern, support and just trust for one another. Thank you so much. Maggie Freeman, A2.
Okay, we'll go into the closing statements. Okay, we'll go into the closing statements. Each of you candidates have, have one minute apiece. Do the time. We're going to nine, it's nine, just, we don't have the time, so. So we're gonna start with Ms. James Freysen. Am I saying your name right? Freysen?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. James Freysen, one minute closing statement.
Okay. Again, my name is Allison James Freysen. I'm A7 on the line. I'm asking for your support on April 19th to vote for me. My closing statement is, I am running on, this, this election is personal to me. I cannot stress that enough. Because of what all our children's and parents are going through, I pretty much experienced it, it all. As a certified social worker, I can bring a different perspective to the Board of Education with my years of training and experience and just my personal life experience can make a huge difference to what we can offer to our, our children in the Newark Board of Education. Thank you. Again, vote for Allison James Freysen, A7, on April 19th.
Thank you, Ms. James Freysen. Ms. Freeman?
Thank you so much. I just wanna say that I love you, and I love every one of those parents.
For your expertise, for your strength, for your courage, for your tenacity to just do the best you can in a climate that has disappointed you, disenfranchised you, and has just disappointed you overall. But I will say, A2 Maggie Freeman is committed to restoring that hope, that care and concern that is needed, to step aside from the policies and all the red tape that keeps us disconnected, and to mending those fences that have definitely been torn to shreds in the last 50 years and continue counting. So I say all that to say is that Maggie Freeman, A2, is the way to go to support your voice, your plan, your purpose. And that's all I got. Thank you so much, and I love you.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman. Mr. Luna?
Yeah. Again, wanna thank the NAACP for hosting our moderators, especially our student moderator, the USVL for hosting us in this space for today. We know the task ahead of us is not easy, right? COVID has taken a huge toll. And what is going to take us into the next era of our education is vision. And not just vision, but very strong plans of how to achieve that vision. In our campaign, that is exactly what we are bringing, right? And we're bringing it based on six different policies that we believe will achieve the right amount of equity and the right amount of community to get us started moving in the direction that kids deserve. It is based on the experience I bring as an educator for over a decade. It is based on the experience that I have in passing local and state policies to change the status quo. I am not looking to get back to normal. Normal was never good enough for anyone. We have to get back better than normal. And the way that we do that is we have the vision and we have the plan to back it up. That's exactly what A1 Thomas Luna will bring to the school board. And because of that, I'm looking for your vote on April 19th for Newark School Board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. Mr. Wilson?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here. Love y'all too. Love you too, Maggie. Newark Tech, Terrier, love them all. But on April, on April 19th, 2022, Newark residents and voters, we have a major decision to make, is involving our children. Vote for the candidate that is hardworking and investing in our children. Vote for the only father, if elected, will be on the school board that have children in the Newark Public School Board, who has experience in education system and is qualified to do the job. Changes, changes, changes in our school cannot wait. Our students cannot wait. Vote Phil Wilson, April 19th, 2022, A3.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Ms. Williams?
There's something different that happens when you become a mother. When you give birth to a child and you present it to the school and you expect for them to nurture and love it. I, when my children wanted to play football, I became the team mom of the Brick City Lions football team. When they wanted to play baseball, I became a coach, knew nothing about baseball. I have Savannah, right now five years old, going into kindergarten in September. I'm running for her. I am running for her and for all of the little children that are going into the schools and the parents who cannot be there. I will be there for you. Thank you. I'm on the moving Newark Forward team. Adorian Murray Thomas is A4. Daniel Gonzalez is A5. And I, Crystal Williams, mom of seven, super mom, is A6.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, and Ms. Murray Thomas.
Thank you. First off, I just wanna thank you, NAACP, Delta Sigma Theta, for putting this forum together, incredible young person for being here, and to my fellow candidates, because before I knew any of these people as candidates, I knew them as people in the work. So I just wanna acknowledge each of them for the work they do. I'm running for a school board because I take the voice of children and community in every single room I go. And if you elect me and my team, that's what I'll continue to do. Whether it was before I got on the board, advocated for young people who are overage, undercredited and underserved, but still at potential, and connected them with resources in CTE, restorative justice programs, or when I started my own organization, She Wins, shout out to She Wins if y'all on there. For all of my young babies in the city of Newark who share my story, and young girls in particular, of losing a loved one to gun violence like I lost my father, and worked to make sure that they use their stories to impact change, or even serving as a translator for Spanish-speaking families. But when I got on the board, I didn't just stop there. I kept going, advocating for policies that promoted equity, transparency and clarity, even if it made some people mad, making sure that I questioned things that did not work and advocated for the things that did, implementing institutional, institutional changes like Amistad, that has advocated, been advocating for in our community for years, but for the past two or three years, are finally being implemented at the degree that it should be. And by the way, we still got more work to do there. Making sure that we have young people who are connected to college and career and pathways, and most importantly, connected to their community. And so when you elect me and you elect my team, you're not just voting one person, you're voting for a voice who cares for you, who has fought for you, and is running with a record and with receipts on what she's already done on behalf of our students, what she'll continue to do, and what we can do together as a city. And so I ask that you vote for me, Adorian Murray Thomas, A4. My teammates, Daniel Gonzalez, he's A5. Chris, A6. And vote for us so that we can move Newark schools forward together. And we don't just need your vote, we need your voice. Because the easy work comes on April 19th, when we get folks into office. The real work starts on April 20th, when we go into them board meetings and you're advocating for what you need, when you stepping into these programs and stepping into these communities and these schools, and making sure our young people have a voice at every table. I am that voice. I'll continue to be that voice and help me be that voice by voting for me and my team. Let's move Newark schools forward together.
I just wanna say, thank you so much for taking out time to do this. Your responses are greatly appreciated, and this has been such an informative and enriching evening, and it has in fact emphasized how important it is to vote in the school board election so that the people can not only be a part of the decision-making process, but also an asset to their community.
So we need to thank UVS O. We are in the team center of UVS O. And the clapping that you hear on Facebook, we had the candidates to bring a guest. We are still coming out of COVID. We still wanted to be safe. We wanted them to be able to talk to you without masks. So we leaned to technology. We had a couple of glitches initially, but it is now on the Interfaith TV, Interfaith Ministries TV page. It is on the Newark NAACP page, and it is on the Alliance for Newark Public Schools page. So if you want to go back to hear the beginning, if you missed it, those are the pages that you can access it. I also want to thank Interfaith Ministries TV for live streaming this, right? This is truly a production. The sound that you hear is random access entertainment, and they go together, right? So you need to know who's behind the scenes. Certainly, our very professional and capable moderators, Mr. Ali McBride Jr., Ms. Vivian Carter, and Ms. Halaia Robinson. Thank you to the Delta Sigma Theta North Jersey Alumni Chapter for partnering with us, and also for our timekeeper. And we wanna thank the candidates. There are seven candidates. Six of the seven came out. We have Mr. Philip Wilson, Ms. Adorian Murray Thomas, Ms. Crystal Williams, Mr. Thomas Luna, Ms. Allison James Freysen, and Ms. Maggie Freeman. This was a very important conversation for us to have. So you may have noticed that we gave them extra time to speak, because it didn't need to be a soundbite for you. You needed to hear from them. We can't talk about how important our children are and then not give them the time that is needed so that you can hear. You get to select three candidates, but you also have to vote on the budget. We cannot have 95% of the people staying home and 5% coming out. It is your responsibility to come out and vote, whether you have children in this district or not. If you're a homeowner, if you're a renter, you have a role to play. We've presented it to you. We've presented them to you. So now you know them, and you'll have another opportunity to hear from them on Tuesday, April 5th. Tuesday, April 5th is the second forum from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. It is going to be hosted by the Newark Trust for Education. You can, it will be live streamed like this one. If you want to learn more about the candidates and the issues, go to the Newark Trust for Education Campaign Central. That email address is www.nuortrust.org/campaigncentral22. You need to become engaged. You need to become educated. You need to be empowered to vote. So go visit that page. Don't stop just here. We have started your education to knowing who's running and what they stand for. So now you go out and you vote, and you take someone with you. We can't talk about defending a democracy and we not, and we don't vote at home. So I would, I would also like to thank our civic engagement committee member, Ms. Linda Lloyd, for helping troubleshoot. And I just wanna say to the audience, please go back and listen to this. We're going to upload it and we're gonna put it in buckets on YouTube so that you can listen to it with, with pieces as opposed to just sitting and listening to the whole thing. We ask questions about governance, finance, personnel, teaching and learning. Our students ask questions. And so now, you don't have a reason to stay home. April 19th, get out and vote. Also, if you wanna vote by mail, the deadline is April 12th. The polling sites where the voting will occur will be available on March 26th. Pay attention, plan to vote. My name is Deborah Smith Gregory, and I serve as the